Good afternoon, bouncers, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the licensing committee. I am councillor Chris Maitland, and I am the vice chair of this committee. To my rights, this councillor is Sir Kevin, who will support me for this meeting. We'll now move to part one of the agenda nominees. First of all, are there any objections?
There are two. I'm a councillor, and so.
Thank you very much. Do any members wish to declare any interest in respect to this agenda?
Yes.
And are there any members? Sorry, I think it's one of the members.
Yeah.
Well, now we can begin with item one, which is on page one of the pack. And it's the report on the happy carriage with private hire licensing policy. That will be presented by Adam McDonald, passing your licensing laws.
Thanks, Chris. So we've got this meeting today to discuss the proposed amendments to the happy carriage with private hire licensing policy. The report provides information about the proposed amendment and some additions to the policy. For your consideration, the amended policy has been drafted in view regards all the relevant legislation that could lose tax licensing functions and operations. Your accusations consider making determination on the proposal prior to a period of consultation being undertaken. It's recommended that you consider and approve the proposed amendments and additions to the policy, a pen for a report, and so to the tax code, general public and any relevant stakeholders. The reason for this recommendation is to ensure that the council's policy provides a clear and concise framework of principles that the council will apply when accepting applications and making determination on applications and licenses, which is essential for ensuring the robust key for tax licensing, tech, that public safety and compliance problems that protect the public. Any other options for your consideration is that you may make alterations if necessary to the proposal, the proposed policy, prior to exoneration being undertaken. But the council currently issues two separate documents to applicants. One relates to private hire licensing and the other relates to carriage licensing. Documents were originally issued as guidance and they were adopted as policy during the last review. And that was in October 2022. The goal basis to previous review was to incorporate the Department for Transport Statutes of Taxing and Higher Standards. At that time, no other considerations were made. The main objective was to get the statute of families into it. The proposed review this time is intended to combine the existing two documents and make unnecessary operations, transform them into one robust policy covering all aspects of the tax licensing regime. There's a copy of your policy at appendage one. I will run through that in detail as we get to it. So firstly, I'll start with the actual management of the policy. So you're requested to approve the removal of any generic guidance from the document. The guidance will include information such as where to get application forms from, opening hours of the council offices, and other information that isn't policy vernacular. It's my consideration that these points should be provided to applicants separately rather than for a basis of the policy. Each current policy is structured as four or five separate sections. I have printed up copies if any, but we should sort of free them and compare. And about eleven appendices in each document. Each section contains a combination of information relating to all of the elements of tax licensing. The proposal is to structure the policy into nine sections and involve appendices. Each of the sections has a specific heading, for example, the licensing process, the matters relating to private licensing, vehicle licensing, operator licensing, et cetera. If you turn to page thirteen, you'll have a board. You can see those headings and how each section fits within the policy. And that is hopefully aimed at making it more user-friendly so people can say, I need to drive licensing, it's all in this section. So the current policy guidance also contains a number of appendices, giving information on matters such as license conditions, vehicle specs, and other information. A lot of these were actually same information that was in each document. So what I attempted to do is put them together. So we have one copy of each set of license conditions, one copy of each set of vehicle specifications, and where there are different bits that relate to one regime rather than the other. So for example, taxi, happy carriages have conditions relating to their top signs and their meters. I highlighted that in the vehicle specifications. So the ninety-five percent is the same as there, but where it says roof signs, it says happy carriages mainly. Previously, quite a lot of information held in the main body of the guidance that we better place as an appendices, for example, drivers' conduct was all in there as part of the main body of the policy. So if there's any information like that, there's been literally probably that main document and put a appendix that is then indexed in the appendices again for ease of access for people who are applying or are currently licensed with us. You'll probably notice from reading through, there's a lot new text in there. So I will run through it bit by bit. Anything that is new text is there. There's no material change, the content always remains there. Things may be too new. The terminology may have been a little flimsy to make it more robust and more in line with the language which that will tend to use in the policy document. And that will be things along the lines of where the previous document was my said, the council should require drivers to be in company. We are too exact that we will require them or the headquarters of some interests to give us a further base there for enforcement. Absolutely, you can't understand. I'll run through this bit briefly and then we'll get into it when we actually get to the policy. So anything you don't text in the policy is new information and I'm requesting to be added to that policy for additional wording. Section one has been introduced as a new, completely new section. That's at page sixteen. That sets out how we come up with this policy and how we will operate in accordance with stakeholders, the ones that will take into consideration, the legislation that will be, will come to you in regard to inexposing our duties as the tactical authority. Section two has been able to address general matters in regard to the process that we follow when processing license applications. It gives information on how a review of appeals duty work. So all applicants can see in one area how we make decisions, why we make decisions, we manage them, and the processes we can follow. Section three, this is page nineteen. I'll run through it if you're okay with that, Joe. I'll actually run through that specifically when I get to the policy documents. So one of the main ones that we're going to bring out is, in terms of page print five, the report. Paragraph four twenty-two, group two, is a proposed new policy on or a proposed policy requirement on vehicle emission standards. Boston Borough Council has a one air quality management area which has been declared because of excess nitrous dioxide gases in the air from emissions from road traffic. In 2020, the council published their air quality action plan off the back of these air monitoring and visuals, setting out a number of ways in which they would try to reduce those nitrous dioxide levels. One of the actions was to investigate setting emission standard for taxi and private hire vehicles. Working in hardship with environmental policies, it was determined that it would be proportionate to only licensing new vehicles that meet Euro six emission standards. These are vehicles that are registered after September 2015. We have written an exception or a certain exemption for things like classic cars, wheelchair accessible vehicles, wheelchair accessible vehicles are a hugely important factor. We need to make sure that we're providing those for people. So at the council's expression, we would license vehicles older than Euro criteria to make sure that we're still providing that service for all the train users. So we encourage that any vehicles from the adoption of the policy wouldn't be any more, any older than September 2015. And if I check through the numbers, two hundred and eighty-eight vehicles currently licensed, forty-seven registered before September 2015. And the GMAT work count would have a peak approximately sixteen ten of eight that would each have to face over a three-year period. We was given four, three licenses after that. So it's not sharp, it's not all of a sudden, you can't have anything September 2015 or older. And then you then have really able to look at the place in that vehicle. The hope is even had, won't be just there on the trade. My, I'll turn to my old paper. Section one, as I ran through, there's a lot on page sixteen. Start there. All of this general information doesn't have any material impact on the way we perform our positions, the licensing authority. It's just saying that this is the policy and how we will work in accordance with that. Licensing process, I've already promised you that. The next main point is page twenty-one, three point twelve point five. And this is the mandating of drivers. I guess they'd say that. The statute of standards say that local authorities should make it mandatory. It wasn't made mandatory on the last licensing review, policy review. Every six months, drivers have to find some of the VHS records. It's a job to manage that and we're finding that a lot of people are getting their licenses suspended. They're not signing up for paid service and we're issuing some better studies on a regular basis. By making it mandatory that they sign up for paid service, it is a very simple exercise for the council to try and dial into that phone call and just check somebody's records rather than having to go to them. If the cost drivers are less at the moment, they're paying eight pounds a year. That will reduce them to thirteen figures for a year for paid service. And it will make it more manageable for us. So hopefully by making it mandatory, what we will then do is on application, we will expect using evidence that they've signed up for paid service before we actually issue them the licensing. Whereas at the moment, we get, they get their license, six months later, yes, we do, yes, jet. And when it comes, we have to stay on the line, so it's, they then can't work. So hopefully, it's usually beneficial for the working model. Two point one point four is a new section on how long we will contain the people's information for whether they've been at the National Register of Vehicle Performance Suspensions. This was made law in, I think, over the last year. I can check for you. It was made law that we have to enter any vehicle repercussions, it's taken on the national day place. Have we then reflected in that information for thirty years? That is higher, potentially higher than our standard retention policy. So that's just putting it into policy. We know what we're doing and the trade know what we're doing. The other one is four point one six point one. And that is that persons failing to attend knowledge tests for the two-year test. It's more commonplace that people walking with knowledge tablets and don't attend. We can have to have footwork staff, have facilities, and we have limited resources. If they give us notice in two more quarters, eight hours, nine, six, we would move that into their next test that we would ask for. So it's very normal service that people will get paid and should pay them on the right. So if we go to page twenty-four, we previously have four of the bylaws in the policy. They have now been moved to separate indexes and we've simply put in age, they're saying, oh, or they're saying that drivers shouldn't. Let me, then, this is what they're seeing from the course range. We previously put in the policy what the procedure was. Now we are saying you will operate in accordance with the bylaws, which are a candidate to this policy under all circumstances. But we're also looking at that as maybe the exception of if a passenger requires a wheelchair accessible vehicle or driver has to extend to the owner of the wheelchair. So these are on the rank here, so you should only travel in the first year for on that rank. If that's somebody in a wheelchair, getting into a standing or walking, in the first year, this is standard for that. We don't want to be penalizing a wheelchair accessible vehicle for breaking that procedure. So just trying to be a little bit more pragmatic about getting to the bylaws all the time in that file. There are also people that have no precautions from loading wheelchairs or carrying assistance stalls. And if they're first on the rank, they can't take this stall. It would only be right that they would pass up. And that's only people who have apologies or that would be told, we can't say that. That would only be people who have no intentions in the council. So you can't just say that I thought what every night. Yeah, we can still expect them to do all of their other duties under this discrimination act. There's a lot. Page twenty-seven, four point eight point two. This is, I couldn't just formalize the issue of recitation notice where MIT practice, the practice visors come on. License things have to run with six-monthly MIT test certificate because we very often get certificates that will grab information on the like tire, left the near side of tire worn, posted to the legal limit, repair was seen possible. Historically, that would be left with the expectation that they would do it. We kind of like to formalize that by making the policy that we would issue a recitation notice containing the necessary time to carry out those works. We have had instances before where people have put in MIT certificates with crack windows frames. When we looked at the whole document, that has been there for one or two MIT certificates previously. Personally, I don't think that's acceptable, not in vehicle, in sick health condition, which is time to go out of the standard. We expect high standards from drivers. We should be doing the same with vehicles. We'll specify a hearing that we have to do it in and we'll have to give us a receipt from the VAT registered down where it's supposed to be carried out correctly by continuing personally. Before we get that, the recitation notice will be issued as instituted. If they don't provide a recitation notice, the license will be suspended and we'll get to it later. So I think on those work. Information, the, my, my page thirty, five point two point one. And this also may have missed this on the guide as I say. This is related to, you can read the paragraph. So where we issue a license, it was on this object of immigration control. We can only by law issue that license until the date where the immigration, where their rights leave fires. But we've just come to formalize that, the policy say that if you've got ten months that you need to remain, we can only issue you for the license up to that ten months. The council now did actually bring up a really, really good point, and I was supposed to have been agreeing with it. This is something that I will change prior to anything going out. If a person's legal remain expires and they've gone through the knowledge test, the concentration test, the medical, as long as those document inquiries aren't outside their normal expiry time, we will honor those. So if you have medical, which is a quite significant part of the gap, so you pay a commission for your medical and the license will be needed for six months, six months time, we won't make it to a medical again when you need to remain extended or made permanent. So again, what's just trying to make it, it's more clear for us, it also works for members of the state. It's a bit like if somebody has lost their license many years and we could run through all of those with the next ability and in the times of that, really. But yeah, but discussing that, yeah. Next, this is the beginning, probably final one I've got from the discussion here. It's supposed to be in comment, a penalty point in the drivers. We don't have them, firstly, we never have one to off. An increasing number of local private car dealers. The basic is that where drivers are making minor misdemeanor, driving with a whole tire that did not cause them to out private hire vehicles, hot from the tax rate. We can issue a set number of penalties points as early intervention to kind of highlight that they're not complying with their requirements. And when they reach a certain amount of points, then we will give them the license people take for a determination to make. This is a policy that we still need to have and it seems to work very well. If you turn right to the back, you've got page eighty-two through to eighty-five. That is an example, that is a point of what the policy really looks like. How we will operate that, the offence that people will be committing, the points that they will be issued with. It's probably something that the committee considered on how many points somebody approved or you wanted to see them in front of the committee. I've gone for, I've gone for twelve because that seems to be the form across the year. Doesn't have to set in stone, it should be more to give them something with what you want to move forward with. But some of them carry twelve because they are quite high. And I would propose if you're going to raise that threshold of points before it goes to a committee, you would have to be raising the points for more for certain things like driving without insurance and just using the vehicle whilst subject to suspensionary access. If it's suspended, it's not licensed vehicle and you're like, it's worth it. So it's actually an offence from the jurisdiction to be doing that. In fact, it's why those points are so high in the value. And hopefully that will kind of drive what's down there. And give us, give us a means of dealing with repetitive or repeat offenders that are causing more issues on a great, on a large scale. People not noticing that they're not finding out, they don't have their licensed vehicles by law or by legislation. They don't know it's been seven to hours, where they're often not finding out until they want to put a personally there on. If that being off road, we need to know, we need to know why and the conditions. Then be clear if something's happened accident and they're not taking the vehicle off the road. Really be confident that that vehicle is still useful and safe for passengers properly in it. I think that kind of covers all the major changes. Little thing about the conviction policy has previously been dependent to the policy of actually moving that near as many bodies of policy. It's not really that important that it should actually be in there for, you know, not just that policy, this is the pain list to it. But it kind of governs everything that we do and measures drivers who operate and in making sure that they are fit and have the license. You'll notice, if we're just referring to page thirty-eight through thirty-nine, the moment that we did force on was a lot of structural information. That's not me taking stuff out, that's stuff that's right in the areas of course we already discussed, information. But anything which in the moral norms should have been, hopefully that's been consolidated, it's been there just a long time in Rosam section. The hope is policy that will make, that will be manageable and he's a friend that we're providing these there. Consultation is post the rule of five weeks, game dust, open to, you know, a draw's expression. Hopefully, console five weeks starting in New Year with the license trace, any relevant state on. So that would be like the people that are listed in section one of the policy. And other council members, local residents, and we'll do that through the first page of our website. Leadership, please, protect our share, keep safe for our children, council members, all common. And please, to bring it to you. What I would say is, we used to have often this forum, believe that this band is, so if you feel any relevant group, I would welcome any details with anybody, but it's just a short covering as many, as many people as possible. So if we go out to consultation for five weeks, we will look at bringing this back to regulation appeals. In March, we think the separation of any information that people have told from that consultation. And then maybe any necessary changes, if there are any comments. I think that's everything that I need to really run through from what the post chain would be. Other than our questions and opinions.
Thank you very much, Anna. We'll be the first to say, obviously, as I thought through both documents, I found this seemed a lot easier to beat through and then to write. I suppose it's the previous one, which we're all part of, still in the process. So now I've been called upon, how's the practice?
And you, I think you're not having a test on the eighty-five pages. You have a wonderful document. There's something through now, I noticed lots of these things are statute-ish, aren't they? So they're actually dictated to us by central government. But I thought about the taxi drivers still on the range at the station, especially when you think about new things like the penalty points. I think there's going to be a consultation process, but how does the man industry get to know what's up there? Is it going to be a summary or you contact sort of like people, internal drivers? As I read through it, I thought it affects their life, but not enough done it. So I just, just thought. just, just thought I'd raise that point back.
Yeah, we actually have a lot of fantastic, that already has loaded into it, being able to, every driver, every operator, um, that we can put this information, it is there, we can do a crazy, what the man change are, and then what we're doing, the next consultation page on the council website, where there'll be an online form where they can submit the comments, our, our, our consultation, but we'll then compile all of those for us, um, and let, let them back in the next three, two weeks, in three years, so we'll use it to communicate all sorts inside brand, foundations, um, um, any, any changes that they need to know about, and like Christmas, we're telling all about growing foundations, we've got three thousand, and then, yeah, this is done, and where people blog, probably receive, you know, all regular, so this is your opportunity to find that information, and I'm hoping they, it gets to everybody. Um, the other part of the case, that is equity forums, I'll be right to, um, individually, I mean, with that information related, I'm good at that.
That's all, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sort of my creepiness, but I'm on the bed. Um, right, it all sounds very, very sensible, there's no doubt about that. Um, the penalty point system though, is rather extensive. Um, you've got points for the driver or the vehicle proprietor and operator, and if on page eighteen, down at the bottom, failure to carry a fire extinguisher, doesn't seem to penalise the driver, but it does penalise the operator, does that not seem possibly wrong? There will be a few more of things like that, and just generally, whilst high standards enforcement of these standards are essential, um, do you not feel that maybe this policy should be, or the, the penalty point system, should be operated for the first year in a, like a, almost an advisory or a trial capacity? If everything is fine after that, I mean, you wouldn't want, for example, having just two months of implementation, ten drivers are, uh, get out of where they want to start.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll address the fire extinguisher first. Um, so you've just said, you've got the best practice driving from out in the fire, comes what we've got attention in on fire extinguishers. Um, what it states is that if the requirement for you to carry fire extinguishers, we should be making sure that they're on team and doing that. My first reaction, and although the locals' reaction was, we would probably say, don't make me carry fire extinguisher. Um, fire safety, we'll say to anybody around the grid, if you've got a engine fire, get the pass for yours out of it, get away, do not contact there. Uh, but what's going to come out, and then I noticed it's in the law. Now, changing bylaws is, um, it's not a least, so if, if, if it's in one, it's got, you know, if it's in there, we've got to uphold that, so that's kind of stayed in there for now. Um, we, we, I mean, I, I would say we're probably looking back to in reality, we should point for not, you know, fortunately, we would position a warning, um, but ultimately that's something that we'll be working from, because I look at changing that bylaws, however, what I was saying, the day after I finished it, that best practice came at which point that is what happened. So I've, I've shelled that one, and we'll deal with that in, in the, um, yeah, absolutely, a hundred and seventy-three gives them, gives the trade a chance to step onto it, and that's something that before we go to the next meeting, I'll come up with some wording, um, in that, in that on the points team section on. It's the, the process we're worried we need about, there being, um, areas of, the areas of, of civilisation, we are expectations, um, we might issue a number of points, um, maybe not, you know, like we put our first year of policy, maybe they're not staying for, um, I don't know, it's really down, it may be a free management, what you'd like to stay, it's always about, excuse, be welcome, you pay them, they should pay them big points, and then go for the first year or three months. You know, it's something, something that's a matter of, it's a clear, breaking, look, honestly, honestly, if you're, doesn't need to connect, but then call, say, you need to do not.
Absolutely, the, the big ones, the.
Yeah, but, yeah, so it's a bit more fortunate approach. So I'll come, I'll come up with some wording, and I'll send it round to all of your consideration, um, as I'm going up, um, the situation.
Okay, everyone.
Captain Woods. Thank you, I think I've got some all the scores on pages eighteen, we're even four eighty-five, I notice that, um, I can use an authorized route light, four points, using a vehicle with a bald or defective tyre, four points per tyre, that's for naturally reviewed vehicles with bald or defective tyres, that, that should be on the road as all, um, and, uh, I don't know, four hundred points, I would consider, um, it's not the best, the best of safety, the safety of the public is priority, some things again are important, but, um, fire is pretty important.
Yeah, um, I kind of use these links because it's tried and tested and it works very well. Um, I looked at a number of other local authorities' penalty points games, and they've seemed to be quite positive approach across these. Um, you would hope with the six months of the M O T testing, bald tyres shouldn't be an issue, we would be picking anything up that's getting low on that limit through the M O T process. Um, if, if they've got bald tyres, I wouldn't be, the driver, not managing them, or maybe they changed your tyres, I don't see it. Um, but yeah, it's, it's something that we can't really determine since then, but we know that it works.
The thing is, of course, if they're fully ready to develop the plan, they're in short to develop, so if they have that, then there'll be a real problem with that. So, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't care what they're listening to, perhaps they're not looking at what possible, I mean, it's obviously a part of it, M O T them six months, this part might do a hundred thousand miles in that seat. So we need to be very, very clear about what goes on here, we check this on every day.
Yes.
And if they are anywhere near that defective, they're not that capable, they're way, they're safety. So that's my personal, the other thing in terms of measures is, it's all fine, but we're moving into the area of driverless car, some along the way, we don't drive as taxis, so where does this policy stand then? That's only a question, I don't, I don't accept that, but we'll have to think about it, because of the, 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 that driver's car, so it's part of the responsibility to invest with the manufacturer, or is it, you know, owe them, in that sort of extent. But it is an issue, so that may become an issue in the future.
Right, yes, and, yeah, we'll deal with it as it does, um, I can't answer your question, I'm not really brought that far around, driverless vehicles.
It is, it's around, I mean, it's around, and it, well, that one is, yeah.
I mean, the legal still have the elections, the vehicle still.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, the vehicle still, it's still, it's still, they're playing the fun and.
The providers have the license, but the driver, I don't know whether he's driving or not, driving the office back, and then that will work.
Then on the, on the, not experts on that one.
No, it's under mine. Thank you, Shaun.
Thank you very much. Just touching on the whole tasking for the council, we had a quick note about, about a lot of particles about how pay checks, so every morning they've got to check vehicles, and they need weasels, council, um, if the, if we need four cars, we've got to check tyres, there's a minimum, we'll screen until it's fixed as the walkway. Personally, like, the, I would expect, you know, this part, you know, it's, uh, you know, probably, that's, that's, just to tell, that'd be very good spread in policy, which I didn't see anywhere about them, um, walk, and, but that should be in the policy, shouldn't it?
It's, it's not in there, it's that enforcement state and it's, it's actually enforced, we're doing that. What I would say is, if you would like to, um, bulletin software, I'm quite happy to do a bulletin about what they should be looking for before they're getting their vehicles, and, and, you know, you're willing to check, make sure you've got screen wash, make sure your wipers are working properly, check your tyre pressure, um, and we've been kind of being that habit reminder at HOP, um, trying to drive up, um, there's no legal requirement that they have to carry out those daily checks.
Shaun, I was going to say, I said, no legal requirement actually to ensure that, um, appearances satisfactory, so, online, satisfied, you find, obviously, there's no legal requirement for that, but then there's a difference between, uh, unsatisfactory appearance for driver and full tyres.
I mean, yes, I think it's not, but it's, it's like.
I don't know, I'm thinking about page thirty-four, the scores on page thirty-four. By the way, can I, how these scores have been, how they've been, and the, and the, and the validity, really. I mean, I, I said about, when one's our task downs, this part, but this is a pretty issue, isn't it? You think a vehicle with a bad tyre, not the right vehicle, so very serious. So if, if you think that, uh, they should be about every morning, and that's right, it means, but they didn't put this somewhere, so that, um, that situation is good, always check and make sure that it's a, and safe, I could say, is that one priority? Also, thank you very much, I'm glad we've come back, but you're important. Captain, that's it.
Thank you, Chair, um, yeah, my question makes sense with that, following on from that, so lots of rules and regulations and the new penalty points, so as I went through them, there's a mention about how these rules and regulations are enforced, or it mentions a customer complaint, but I didn't really read anything about whether the enforcement officers or how to be controlled, that these rules and regulations, or the, the, obviously by the penalty points, actually control whether or not that's happening.
Um, but we have talked about enforcement policy, how we're, we're involved in, see, which would cover, as long as that, but we're talking about, how it actually happens is, we have, um, we have post, at the moment, so we have an enforcement officer, and then the fire enforcement works well, so we investigate on basis, um, with, with approaches, we were ready to, when you come back, we start with the tax line, they've sort of the information, um, and then people would be, well, at the moment, they're issued warnings, um, written for warning for those expresses in the, the, stop, um, the penalty point scheme is kind of able to formalise in that involvement, warning system, um, but yeah, we have a whole group, and obviously it appears to.
Thank you. I was actually, I was wondering, then it's always been nice to meet here, because it's new people, I don't think, well, these are also regulations, so it's not saying, well, what happens if there's enforcement and, I think that might be an idea to include, like a warning to say, if you don't follow these rules, or because of the penalty points, well, we have, uh, somebody who'll be checking up on you, this is what could happen.
Yeah, what, what I can do is I'll try and, I'll, I'll reference the book, enforcement policy, um, I'll have a really, 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 really realise myself with it, and then we can put a paragraph in there that's saying that operating in accordance with, okay?
Cheers, thank you.
Absolutely, sir. Uh, thank you, Chair. I, um, sort of reached at least about the actual policy itself, it is much easier to use, which I understand will, much clearer to follow, it's very important. Certainly, to me, with the point scheme, again, I, I think it has its merits in so far as it sort of highlights and reminds people of the finer things that can happen, but they do have, I'm concerned, I could go with our twelve pointers, um, I don't see why we, why that isn't just the following things will go to committee.
Yeah, and, and that's why I brought this in, in the conversation, because I, I appreciate you, you know, I've done this on my own.
Oh, yeah.
But in round people, so yeah.
But to my mind, a twelve pointer is going to go to committee, so, yeah, the group won't have the twelve, because they're going to go, and also I think that would help in the, uh, this transition here. But what I wouldn't like to see is while we're being slightly light on the point things, like, and into, that we, you know, the twelve pointers, yeah, I don't think they should be light on ever.
Would you allow me to separate?
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah, um, well, I think it just is, yeah, sensible.
You just have to separate them, then, got enough of that all mentioned at the end, saying.
So it's a problem, how, how long do these points last? I mean.
Wrong in twelve.
Wrong in twelve months, so, yes, if you've got a twelve, it, it, it's going to go to committee anyone.
One hundred and thirty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I suppose. Yeah, so, I mean, again, if you've got a twelve pointer, it's going to go to committee any, yeah, I just think that they should be slightly in the start, you read, these things will go, because we can do about committee, and the probably lesser things, you, for a performance system.
I'll, I'll split it out, and put them into their own section.
So, fair.
Um, page fifty-seven, the council, any information about how, they tell how long passengers, there is nothing about ambulance, or maybe it's found on the one in one number, and it's called on page sixty-two. There is no knowledge test, there's nothing as well about, uh, what is, what speech of people, if, uh, somebody chose, is there any, like, mandated for them to have first papers, or certificates, do you have anything in mind about that?
There's, there's nothing under three four, we're completely first things, um, the knowledge test is based on, and this is a national problem, um, the private uses them by laws, which are things like learning the location system, you know, and then it's mainly, the rest is geographic, but the knowledge test basis is to differentiate between fire, higher driver and pack and carriage driver. Well, my playbook, so you can read Plan Your Route, pack and carriage driver, you should go flag one down, get in, and the knowledge is done on the basis that they should know the local area, so if they don't have access to staff by navigation, they can get to where that customer wants to go. Um, there's nothing under this, I mean, that they've got to do, um, first aid, um, how do we make do this, and I, um, in the future, I do want to look at, um, putting in some life competency policy, um, I shouldn't want to do too much, all right, at the moment, I think this is enough to get the heads around it, if it all goes very wrong, they go, well, you've got to do, say, for, you've got to do your medical, you've got to do a driver assessment, and the driver assessment is on, doing on transport, which, uh, there's , there are, it's like that more, it's also first aid, so, um, you get particularly long the street moments, again, if the main country, we can't be sure that they're doing it, um, without service provider in line, it, you need to identify, first aid, identify probably, is ready, can you mean, and, and then, yeah, certainly, work for next year or so, and, uh, policy is, obviously, I thought that's more employing as well, actually, if you've got a big taxi, that, well, surely the employer should offer first aid training, it's down to them really, I think. Yeah. Offer the training, yeah.
We don't, we can understand.
No, that's nice, no, I don't know. You think as a, as a good employee, they would do that, if you have, if you're dealing with people, it's, as an employer, you really wouldn't, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the question. Okay, I would leave you to recommendations on page four of the agenda, you are having to come in. How's your backside, on your, your, that's a little reason, and always friendly. Thank you very much, Captain. Thank you very much, Captain.
And I'll, I'll, um, I'll go right with those points and get more change, thank you. I can say, we'll see, it's the, um, I thought it, there's what, where we thought of the all marks?
Well, we have a test.
Do you want? I'm not, he asked to do a test, to find out what the test, yeah, it'd be interesting.
Yeah, maybe, I'll pack the next one, I'll bring it to him. Yeah.